It is 6:30 PM. I will call the Tuesday, January 21st meeting of the Superior Common Council to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiances to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Fantasy, or Van Sickle. Sorry. Counselor Van Sickle. Counselor Bender.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney.
Here.
Counselor Fantasy.
Here.
Counselor Elm.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Southernland.
Here.
Counselor Kern and Counselor Dahlbeck are excused.
We have a quorum.
Item number four is approval of the minutes from the January 7th regular meeting.
Motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Southern is their discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item number six is the consent agenda.
Motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Fantasy is their discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 7.1 are the Finance Committee recommendations from their December 12th meeting.
Motion is by Counselor Elm, the second by Counselor Fantasy is their discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
7.2 is the Finance Committee recommendations from their January 9th meeting.
Motion is by Counselor Fantasy, the second by Counselor Southern is their discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.1, I am recommending approval of miscellaneous licenses.
The motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Southern is their discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.2 is Planning Director Syracuse recommending approval of a proposal from the redevelopment authority of the City of Superior to enter into a purchase agreement with Hallet Dock #8 LLC regarding the purchase of property to expand the dock and provide illegal access to the dock property from a public right-of-way. The RAC's Board approved this purchase agreement on January 13th.
The motion is by Counselor Van Sickle, the second by Counselor Elm is their discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.3, Environmental Services Director is recommending to accept a $499,769 grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, sustain our Great Lakes, to incorporate stormwater best management practices into the city's upcoming Barker's Island South End Restoration Project.
Motion is by Counselor Fantasy, the second by Counselor Olson is their discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.4, Public Works Director Janago is recommending approval of redistribution of funds collected from Enbridge easements, land use agreements, and maintenance agreements and repairs totaling $584,920 to the Capital Improvement Program general revenue.
Motion is by Counselor Bender, the second by Counselor Ludwig. Counselor Olson.
Director Janago is at the end of it then? For this, for this segment? Last amount of money that's coming in for this?
That I am aware of. We have had some talk about, about doing some work on Barden, but nothing has been finalized out there.
Good. Thank you.
Further discussion. Counselor Fantasy?
So is this gonna be, this money is going just into the, just the, as an income source? Or is this gonna be earmarked for the projects that Enbridge?
No, this removes all earmarks. It was previously earmarked for 31st Avenue East.
And that's been done? Or no?
More, not a full reconstruction, but there's been work on it, yes.
So, so then why would we put it just in the general fund and leave it un-earmarked now, if you will?
Because 31st Avenue East and at least the proposed CIP is not funded for a full reconstruction right now.
With, with this $500,000, would it be able to? Because it's my understanding that that, that $500,000 was for the damages that were done on that street, right?
Yes, but many, many of those damages have been repaired, at least through paving. And so, a lot of that money already came out of the general maintenance, general street maintenance fund. So we've put a lot of city money into it already. The, the project that this was quote-unquote earmarked for was a full reconstruction of 31st Avenue East, which would be, I think that was a $1.4 million project. So this would not cover a reconstruction. We would have to use this money and another nearly million dollars to reconstruct 31st Avenue, which I think most of us agree is basically passable right now. So it's, I mean, it's fully repaved. At some point, it's gonna need to be reconstructed, but I believe that's also a street they'll use to access more tank improvements and ultimately the INTECH project.
I guess I'm still a little confused. If, if the money was earmarked for this project, why would we un-earmark it when the project still needs to be completed?
There's no timeline to complete it right now. It's not necessary in the net. We're saying, we're not saying we're never gonna do it. We're saying we're not gonna do it in the next five years. At least for now.
Okay.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Motion carries.
Mayor Payne has an updated 2020 through 2025 capital improvement budget.
Counselors, I have not done this before, but I'm going to, I think this is my first PowerPoint presentation as the mayor of Superior for any reason, even in public. I'm not a big fan of PowerPoint. And I want to thank Ronnie Gill for learning PowerPoint today so that we could have this. But I wanted you to have the documents that I sent as part of the packet in front of you so that if you have questions about the process for how we created the, the proposed CIP amendments before you tonight, that I could answer at least questions about the process before we go into general discussion. Excuse me, I just gotta grab my notes. Most of what you'll see on this presentation, we, you have already seen. First, after the council priority setting session several weeks ago, my office compiled your votes. Now, I want to admit Counselor Elm very quickly discovered by counting every single one of these that some of these votes were miscounted. We did a little bit of investigation. Some was just Ronnie read them wrong, and some, I'm not kidding, was because the dots actually fell off by the time she counted them. That said, I want to point out this document, who voted for what. I did not use this for the construction of CIP. This is just for your own sake, if you want to look at what your priorities were a few weeks ago, reference back. I just put it up here tonight because I wanted to offer you first a compliment and then something of a criticism. As a compliment, when we look through this, we don't notice any factionalization here. There were, people were not voting according to any previous council alliances or relationships. It looked like you really were just voting your values, and you voted together on a lot of things. So I appreciate the, the work that you put in together to construct this. As a criticism though, one of the, one of the big risks of this process was that the council would not fund some of the truly urgent priorities of the city, some of the things that we really must be doing that may not meet your individual priorities. And that did seem to happen a little bit here. In fact, we heard some folks talk, even say about this project or that, that, well, we don't have to waste votes on it because they have to fund it anyways. Recognize that did happen a little bit, but that doesn't mean that this wasn't valuable. This was very valuable because, this is just the next page. When we broke out the projects, we got a clear sense, even when we divided it between new projects and existing projects, of what your priorities were as a council. And for the most part, I agreed with many of these priorities. I think it reflects what we've been doing on an ongoing basis, take some responsibility for what the city actually needs, even though it doesn't necessarily make the paper as a new project. But it also shows some vision for the future that we are thinking ahead. We do need to do some new things. So, in looking at this, I recognize that this is not a complete way to build a CIP. I would not be able to use these numbers and decide what must be funded because there are some very serious things missing. Obviously, if you look down at the very bottom of the existing projects, our public safety vehicle's got no votes at all. Now, I'm not calling you out on that. I, I think we all recognize that we have to fund them, and you use your votes to fund the things that you actually care about. But obviously, we had to find some way of measure, of putting these priorities against some of the truly essential needs of the city, even if it's not what the council's saying they actually want to be supporting right now. That's what we as an administration felt like we had to do. So, as we were trying to figure this out, I met with Counselor Sweeney, who delivered this document to me, and he might be able to answer your questions better than I can. But this, this was apparently passed by the Finance Committee several years ago, and has been used off and on by our Finance Department to help rank CIP projects according to how necessary they are, to determine how much funding they should get, when they should be funded, if they should be funded at all. This is obviously a subjective document. I have copies of this if you'd like to view it. But it was very helpful to me personally, I think in all of us as we were constructing the proposal before you tonight, to try and put some weight onto individual projects. I think we can all admit there are some things that are just more important than others. Even if the council can unanimously or near unanimously support one project, that doesn't mean it's more important than critical needs like infrastructure and public safety. And so, I used this document personally and made my own subjective decisions on what I felt each, where I felt each project felt in this scale. I will note that I added one more item here, zero. There were some things that simply may not have met community needs at all. Those projects, by the way, were things that have never been funded and received no votes at the council priority setting session. Believe it or not, we had a few of those. This is how this shook out, at least for the new projects. These are just my basic rankings. I believe you have this document. And again, feel free to take notes. We can come back to any of these. And this is how it shook out for the existing projects. You'll notice the existing projects got rated much more highly. Part of the reason for that is we're looking at, at least from the rating criteria on the left-hand side, the reason for that is very obvious. Most of the projects in the CIP are urgent needs of the city and have been for many, many years. They are more or less the purpose of the capital improvement program. There's one other modifier I put on here that I want to call your attention to. I, in constructing my document for you, gave significantly more weight to existing projects. And the reason for that is because, one, these projects have shown that they have council support, sometimes year over year. They also are projects that have been in the planning process, sometimes for several years. And so, we've put significant staff time into them already. Some of them are grant-funded or have other ongoing support. That, that makes it more important for us to emphasize those projects. That's why when you factor all of these multipliers in, we create a general number for us to just look at and see, with all of these extra factors, whereabouts does everything fall? And if you were to take and spend a lot of time with this, you would notice that many of them line up pretty well with the council's priorities. The council did prioritize a lot of the significant work that we have been doing over the last several years. There's one other weakness in the council priority setting session, and the CIP itself though, that I want to bring your attention back to. I'm gonna go backwards. When you look at the actual priorities, this is something that we noticed, well, I should give credit, Director Putz noticed. These projects may be line itemed in the CIP, but that doesn't reflect how the money is actually spent. Many of them are substantially similar. For, I noted some examples, the sidewalks program and the 28th Street paved path. Those are pretty similar priorities. If you believe in the 28th Street paved path, you're telling me that you believe in pedestrian transportation in the city. The sidewalk equipment and the public works equipment. If we were to fund the new sidewalk clearing equipment we've been discussing, it would be purchased out of the public works equipment fund. So you're supporting very specific public works equipment, but they're substantially similar. The police squads and tech, this is something, I believe this is the first thing we noticed. There's a line item for the laptops and tech for the police department, and another line item for the police department's squads. However, when we fund that each year, it goes into one account, and the police department purchases their squads and the equipment for those squads from that account. So while we are looking at it as two separate things that we're purchasing, the police department really isn't. They're, they're purchasing a squad with everything that the squad needs. That got even more complicated when we looked at the fire department, where just about all of their capital purchases are in a single account. So buildings and fire rigs and equipment are all in the same account. So while you're voting for one thing or another, sometimes you're casting votes for the same thing. So many, a few of you, well, nobody voted for the police squads, a few of you did vote for the equipment. That's been a joke around the building, by the way, as we've been describing it, that you, you voted for the equipment for the squads, but not the vehicles to put the equipment in. But please don't take too much offense at that because we found a way to combine it. And ultimately, as we tried to look at all of your priorities and combine them to see, what are you truly saying it to us? What actually has value? What are you trying to fund? The final thing we did, I recognize this is difficult to read, but I'll walk you through it. We needed, the only way to actually decide how we were gonna make these cuts, because, because please remember, when we did the priority setting session, we were facing as much as $10 million in deficit on the CIP. To find $10 million is a substantial challenge. And regardless of what anybody's priorities are, the first and only priority of this process is to balance the CIP. And the only way to do that is to look at where the money is. And the money is in the larger projects. So despite the fact that most of your priorities lined up with the most expensive things in the CIP, that is the only place that we would find significant funding, even after adding in some new revenue, to balance out this CIP. So, we went through an exercise that I've been going through with the general fund for several years now. Rather than looking at what we had been planning to spend or what we had budgeted in past years, we went backwards and looked at what was actually being spent by the departments on these ongoing line items. Next, I'm gonna explain one of the realities of the CIP over the last couple of years. I've had a hard time explaining this over the past few days. But as you'll remember, that a lot of the terminal tax revenue over the past several years has been substantially higher than we projected it to be. So we, we projected roughly 2% or 6% growth over the coming years on the terminal tax. But over the past five, six years, we've seen 50%, 30%, 20% growth, substantial amounts of new money that allowed us to predict a pretty rosy future for terminal tax revenue. That meant as that money was coming in, we started putting more money into our future planned spending. So if in 2019, we're planning to get six, seven, eight million dollars from terminal tax in coming years, we bumped up all the big accounts. We never actually got to those years before this year where it came time to cut it. So we found that we could just pull back on some of the increases that we had been planning to make. I know that sounds confusing, but we can revisit it. But where we found a lot of money is in what we were actually spending. Now, we looked at a number of different departments. You'll see here, the top one, hopefully you can still hear me. The top is the police department spending, and that is a combination of squads and tech. The, the next is public works equipment, generally the streets department. The third is the general street department, or a general street maintenance fund. The fourth is the sidewalk program. After that, the fire department, parks and rec, and the IT fund. Now, not all of these were helpful. Some of them, like sidewalks, were very new. We've only started funding that at increased levels just a few years ago. And so that, making an average of spending there wasn't very valuable. But in some cases, specifically the police department and the two public works line items, it was very valuable because their actual average spending was significantly lower than what we had been planning to spend in our current CIP. So for example, I know you can't see this exactly, but the public works equipment, the average spend over the last 10 years was 438,000, just under 439,000. And while there were some higher than that, most fell at or below $500,000. And so, what we did is we just pulled back to the average spending. In fact, we increased over what the average spending had been. You're obviously gonna see some outliers in some of this data, and some years where the spending was very, very high. The reason for that is because these funds do roll over. Each year, when we get to 2015, there's an allocation projected for the streets department general maintenance. That money is transferred to that fund, and they spend what they can that year. What they don't spend generally stays in that fund. It rolls over year over year. So there are some fund balances. As far as I remember, we did not take from any of those fund balances to try and balance this. The money they have, they get to keep. They could still have some frugal years and save money rolling year over year. But in the places where we made the most significant cuts from the document, we took that money from future planned spending, not existing spending. And in just about every case, we increased the spending in those departments from previous years and the average based on your priorities. So, one where it came in pretty tight, I can't remember exactly where it falls, the police department. Their average is 222,000. I am proposing spending 225,000 in 2020 and 220,000 in years going forward. That's the only place where we can see, where we're saying a cut. And if you look very close, you'll see last year that we spent significantly more than that. A lot of that's from the take-home squad. A lot of that's from the take-home squad program. That is where the lion's share of the cuts happened. However, there was, there were some money that was actually cut and some that was not added, or more importantly, revenue that was added that created some very urgent needs for really the coming year and certainly for the coming five years, that is not reflected in this document. I wanted to call your attention to these items because we're going to be revisiting this document. And you may want to propose some changes in the CIP. I know you will certainly want, have new priorities in the coming years, but these are five items that in meeting with department heads, we really cannot ignore. First, and most importantly, I believe, is a new fire rig in 2020. Our fire rig at headquarters will come out of compliance. We need to purchase a new one for a minimum of about $600,000. We have a revolving, a revolving fund program for the fire rigs. You'll notice that in the CIP document we're proposing. $120,000 each year gets us a new fire rig on time when the previous ones become obsolete. However, with a number of expenses over the last several years, the fire department, because again, that account includes building expenses and other equipment, fire department's been spending that money sometimes on things other than fire rigs. That account is largely zeroed out right now. And we need to buy a fire rig. That is our most urgent missing need. If we don't buy that fire rig by the end of 2020, there is a solid chance our ISO rating could fall. That could be a very real expense for property owners in the city of Superior. Second, of course, police squads. I believe they're basically adequately funded going forward, but they're funded at the bare minimum. And you'll see we've largely eliminated the take-home squad program. This is a critical public safety need, and I believe that's going to need more money as more revenue becomes available. Third, the Barker's Island Marina faced some significant cuts. That is largely a part of the reason for that. Nearly every capital asset to the city either faced cuts or did not receive significant increases. But we recognize there are urgent needs at that marina that must be addressed. And so as new revenue comes in, I think we're going to have to have a plan to address those needs on a little bit quicker schedule because the cuts were pretty significant from the marina. Fourth, the Barker's Island Causeway, I don't believe that's urgent in the next year or two, but we need to get that in the plan. That is the only access to Barker's Island. We need to have a bridge to the island, and we don't want that to be an emergency in five, six, 10 years, whenever it will become an emergency. And finally, debt and levy reduction. I believe we only added $1 million in new bonding to this program. However, every dollar of new bonding you put in increases taxes. We didn't put it in until 2023, so, wait, three, 22? 22. So we're not increasing taxes this year. We're not proposing that. But if we don't find new revenue or new cuts, there will be a tax increase in coming years. As you remember, the levy limits on cities do not apply to new debt service, and that's what would happen. So to say nothing of the fact that you, we do have proposed debt to purchase in the next, in every year of this CIP. So to bring new revenue into this document, one of the urgent things that we should do is reduce our debt load, which not only reduces or prevents tax increases on the citizens of Superior, but it assists our general fund because all new debt has to be paid for. And we pay our debt service out of the general fund. And so as we take on new debt, we create new problem, new expenses in the general fund. Those expenses obviously lead to general tax increases as well, well, as we, or they require service reductions. That leads me to my final point. This is the document, but there is the potential for new revenue. In fact, it is very likely we can revisit this document in June, so I don't want you to fit. While this is obviously tough to face significant cuts in the document and we have urgent needs, this is not the final word on the CIP, even for 2020. The very real revenue sources that we're going to be looking at in the next year are, first, the general fund surplus, and second, the general fund reserve drawdown. Most of you will remember, we tend to run a surplus every year in the general fund. Frugal spending by department heads, conservative general fund budgets lead to a reserve at the end of the year. That is a very good financial practice. We should generate a surplus at the end of the year because the other option is generating a deficit which dips into the reserve. We don't want to do that. But pre, city ordinance currently requires us to divide that surplus in a very specific way, a solid chunk of it going to the reserve. As you know, the reserve is well overfunded, well beyond what it needs to be. So myself and the finance committee are right now working on a change to that ordinance that will allow us to still protect our reserve, to keep it at the levels we want to keep it at, but capture the entire surplus now, if the reserve is healthy. We should be able to do that. We could have as much as a million dollar surplus as we closed the books for 2019. I will propose putting that money directly into the CIP to address those needs that I just showed you on the previous slide. If we continue to have smart and frugal and responsible general fund budgets, we can expect surpluses each year and have a steady new source of revenue for the CIP or wherever we decide to invest it in. We could also, of course, see growth in the terminal tax. We project it to start growing again. That may not be next year, but at some point, this is a very healthy asset and bridges a very healthy company and petroleum remains a very healthy commodity. And so we expect that to continue to grow. Finally, as soon as we finish determining how we will handle this general fund surplus, we'll be working with the finance committee on a reserve drawdown. We've already communicated with our bond rating advisors, and we're developing a plan that will reduce the size of the reserve and inject millions of dollars of new cash over the life of the CIP into, into the document. I only caution that that is a one-time source of revenue. It will be very helpful for this document. It will allow us to address some one-time needs that we might want to put back in there, but it doesn't structurally increase the health of the overall CIP. That is my presentation on the construction of the CIP. Before I resume the chair, are there questions about the process that I, that you need these slides for, before I take my seat again? So councilors, where we're at, as I mentioned to you in email when I presented this, the document is yours to approve, reject, or table. I have softly recommended tabling, but I would ask that you ask as many questions as you can tonight, have some discussion. If you feel comfortable, you are free to pass it, but there is no urgency to pass this tonight. You're free to table it. And if you table it, of course, we will be available to meet with you in the coming weeks. That said, questions? Councilor Sullivan.
Thanks. Great presentation too, by the way. Let's have a few questions before we, I talked to you yesterday about it too, just kind of want to be transparent about it. I asked for that document that Councilor Sweeney had provided you with, with the zero through four or one through four, and I haven't got that yet. But if you could email that to me or first hand that out, that would be great. Which leads me into the next question. I didn't know, I didn't know about that multiplier, let's call it, right? For our projects, when you added a one through a, one, whatever it was, one, for example, city surveillance had eight votes and the multiplier was one, so it stayed at eight. Something else that had five votes, the multiplier was at four, so now it's got 20 votes. You know what I mean? I didn't know about that before. I don't think, no one, I hope no one up here knew about that because I didn't see it. I wish we would have known about that because you know what, to be honest, that could have changed some of the, some of the ways someone might have voted as to, why would I put two on that one if the multiplier is going to be one, if I know it's not going to be a priority, if that makes sense? Another thing is maybe in the future, my idea, I like the idea that with the multiplier moving forward, if we're going to do that now we know about it, maybe have, toss around the idea of having one for the, for the new projects and existing projects, separate ones, right? Voting, yeah, 10 votes for each, just an idea. I love the way we do the prioritized budgeting, but I just wish that we didn't have that multiplier added on to it because I didn't know about that. Question, another question is, in our, do you see us sometime in the near future finding some extra money for the CIP, maybe half a million dollars or so to add more to the CIP? Do you find more sources of income to the CIP?
Yes, as I explained, I would expect that and hope that we have at least some amount of general fund surplus each year, and we could propose that for CIP funding annually if we wanted to. In addition to that, we do expect growth in the terminal tax to resume.
So then would it be, would it be fair to say that if we were to find some funding this year, that some of the items in the 2020 deferred would jump up right into the, if we found the funding for it?
Yes, that is the idea behind the deferred. You will remember that last year, CIP was the first to have the categories of essential, discretionary, and deferred. We created those partially to remind councilors what work we must do as a city versus what our projects that the community may support, council may support. But deferred is a way of recognizing that there are some things that we value and intend to accomplish, but we cannot afford right now, to get a vote on it from the council. Because like you saw, I valued existing projects more than new projects expressly because the council has supported them before. And so that is the same point of deferred. If it sits in the deferred and you pass this document, you'll have passed those too. You just won't have funded them. And so in futures, yes, when new revenue comes in, those will be very highly valued, and we would value those over new projects. And just backtracking regarding this document, the rating improvement criteria, I didn't have that that night either. And obviously, there is no perfect process, no perfect priority setting process that would automatically be able to generate a document this complex. The priority setting process was advisory, a way for the council to weigh in on the process before its development. The traditional process for any budget is the mayor proposes it, the council debates, and passes it. So the, the point of the priority session was not to create the document. We would never do that. The, the point was to give your advice on what you wanted to see before we began the process of constructing it.
So I, I understand where you're coming from. So if you were to bring an item up from deferred, would you go back to the numbers that, the total votes, would you use that as a ranking system? Is that your whole goal with that? For example, fire hall, 20 points. Would that, if you found the funding, would that, because it had the most points, would that be the first thing brought up in the deferred?
Not necessarily. Actually, you'll see there is a priorities, there are priorities set in the deferred. There's low, medium, and high priority, and that was based on the council's priorities alone. I did not apply any weight to that. Because if it's in deferred, it's usually because either we don't know enough about it yet, or there's some other good reason we could defer, or find some other way to fund it, or because it wasn't very essential.
And there's one last thing here. The only thing that, that throws me off about it is one of the highest votes, I'm going to go back to the city surveillance again, that had the most votes, had eight votes, had 250,000. It was cut, brought down to the deferred at the low priority and cut in half. That, that's what I'm just kind of thrown off about this. If we could maybe get some explanation behind that.
The cut in half is because in some of the early drafts, we were planning on funding it and just in the end couldn't afford it. The reason that that was deprioritized, partially this rating criteria, I simply could not justify that it had a meaningful effect on public safety. It wasn't any kind of state or federal mandate. The council showed some support for it, but in a document that we're making significant cuts in other previously prioritized items, there just wasn't room for it. And so there, I mean, we could change it and defer to 225, to a million, whatever you want to change the number to in deferred, but, so I wouldn't focus on that too much. But the reason it was deferred is it's never been supported before by the council, and I, I don't see it as an urgent public safety need, especially compared to the other things that we did fund.
I think I've covered what I need to ask. Thank you.
Councilor Sweeney.
I don't want to end discussion tonight, but I am going to seek to pass this off until the next meeting, whether we want to do it now or later. And so I will make that motion now, but I don't want to end discussion tonight if it wants to continue.
Councilor, my sense of Roberts rules compels me, we have to actually get a motion to approve before we table it. Would you mind?
That's fine.
Moving to approve, and then we can move to table?
My next comment is budgeting is a combination, I think, of art, science, and guessing, okay? Those three. Because we don't know what the future is going to bring, but we have to have and develop a system that is proven over time. But nobody wants to have, just like you alluded to, nobody wants to have deficit spending at the end of the year. We don't want that. So we can overestimate expenses, underestimate revenue, or do whatever we have to do, those combination of things, because we don't want, absolutely do not want to go into deficit spending if it can be all. So I applaud you for doing this. I think there's some things to fine tune, as there always is. And somebody brought the question, well, let's move up from one category to the next. Each year should stand on its own. Just because it's in, wherever it is one year, doesn't mean it's going, because something may drastically may change. We may have to move things around. So I think this is a great process.
The only qualified, and I, I don't want to debate the point, but the, well, each year must stand on its own because a council can only approve the current year's spending. Part of the reason for a five-year document is because many of these are very significant projects that take years of planning. And so it's, I think we need to be cautious about removing things that have been in the hopper for a while. That's, that's a theme that has run through my planning for this for the entire process. Further questions? Councilor Ross.
So is it, is it a fair assumption to say that it's easier to estimate our expenses than our revenue at this point in time?
No, I don't think so. In fact, a lot of these future expenses are very generalized. I mean, we can make some predictions on the, the ongoing funds, but there are a lot of unknowns in the coming years about what may come up. The revenue, there's plenty of variables in it, but a lot of this is pretty stable revenue. It might go up and down, but we're going to have some form of terminal tax. We're going to have CDBG grants. So most of this is pretty stable. What it will exactly be is unpredictable, but, but I would caution you that there are projects that we don't know exist yet in the coming years.
But as far as, one of them is the decrease in the terminal tax to the tune of about $700,000 this year.
A little less than, yes.
Pardon me?
A little less, 500,000, 600,000?
I thought it was 689,000.
You're in the ballpark.
Well, that's a big ballpark. 500 to 700, what is it? So I guess my point is, over the five years, I mean, it, the estimated revenue will be one thing, the estimated expenses will be another. So you mentioned that this will be a document that we'll be able to adjust year after year after year because of those, those things. Where are we today with the 2020 budget?
This proposed budget is balanced for 2020. If and when you approve this document, we can release the funds for 2020. Now, we have a approved 2020 budget from last year that was not balanced, that is not balanced, correct? So we would not want to release those funds because we don't have enough revenue for all of those. That's why this is a proposed amendment to the 2020 document.
From last year?
Yes. Because the reduction, the reduction in terminal tax wasn't technically a reduction, it was a reduction from a projected number. So we just couldn't execute the 2020 document as it exists right now.
But we also weighted some of the projects so that in the, in the document that you got from Councilor Sweeney, we didn't use that necessarily last year in our CIP. So we've changed our own formula?
Well, it's, it was really just my formula. We've never had a formula made a document.
Okay, but we, but we end up weighting some of the projects and the funding for them because of it?
Yes, I did. Yes.
Okay.
Councilor Fennessey.
Just a, just a couple of things. The, in, in your presentation, you listed the five things of utmost importance, the, the fire rigs in 2020, police squads, Barker's Island Marina, the causeway, and then debt and levy reduction. The, but just to, just to clarify, those are of utmost importance, but they're not fully funded? Is that, is that what I'm understanding you?
Yes, there are reasons for not funding each of them, but yes, they are not fully funded. We will need to find a way to address those.
Okay, so, I mean, like, take the, take the fire rig in 2020, it's going to be out of commission and, when did you say, January?
End of the year.
End of the year. So, so how, so, so this document doesn't, doesn't solve that problem, correct?
No.
Okay. So, so are you, are you now looking for, for us to, to amend it, to fix that, that problem? Is that what you pointed those out?
No. The reason I pointed that out is because... The reason I pointed that out is because if you were going to start moving, if you had significant discrepancies, if you felt you were willing to cut these more than I did, I'll give you an example, street maintenance, general street maintenance was, I believe, one of the highest rated things by the council, both in your priorities and after I weighted it. Therefore, I didn't feel comfortable cutting that below its average spending. I increased it from its average spending. If you want to now change your mind, change your minds and say, we can afford a little less in street maintenance this year, let's, let's fund the fire truck, you can do that tonight. I just wanted to point out that if you're gonna, if you're going to cut more from the CIP, please pay attention to those things. The reason, what I would do is if you approved this exactly as it is when new revenue comes in, which again, I'm very confident we'll have new revenue this year, that's what I'm gonna be looking at, that's what I'm gonna look to fund first.
So we're, of the five items that are of the utmost importance, we're gonna just wait and hope that we have more money come in?
They are not of the utmost importance, they're the utmost importance of things that were, of things to fund next. I believe that the things that are in here are of the utmost importance.
Okay, okay, thank, I think I probably misunderstood you then, when you, when you gave that. But like for the, for the fire rigs, if we have, if we have a rig that's being obsolete at the end of the year, I think we need to work that into this budget or work on something to, you know, to fund that instead of, instead of funding some other projects. I mean, that's a pretty big, pretty big thing. I mean, the other one there is police squads. I think that's pretty important that we, that we fund those with real money instead of hoping that we get more money coming in throughout the year.
Yeah, I have nothing to debate there, you are free to do that. The only thing I would point out is the fire rig, this is gonna sound a little ridiculous, but the fire rig doesn't disappear at the end of 2020, there are just consequences to it falling out of compliance. It can still drive fires and fight fires, so we don't lose it.
Right.
We just need it to stay in compliance and maintain our ISO rating. So it's urgent, not an emergency. So yeah, I mean, yes, I agree that it's urgent, yes, you can amend this document to fund those.
But I mean, the ISO rating is substantial, that, I mean, that's huge. Work in the insurance industry, the ISO rating that we have, I don't think there's anyone in the area that has one better. And I mean, it's things like that that I think we need to make sure we fund, unless, and I guess where I'm going with this is if, if we need to go back to the drawing board and make sure we get those, those funded, that's, you know, that's what we can do. I guess I just want to make sure that you don't have another, another plan for funding these essential items outside of the CIP. Because, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna redo this and make amendments if there's, if there's other options that, that you're, that you're looking at, that you're entertaining.
The option that I'm entertaining is, what I expect, I will not project new revenue yet, because technically, city ordinance right now does not allow us, allow us to redirect the full surplus. We have to change that ordinance if we're gonna do that. I hope and expect that the finance committee in the council will pass the ordinance proposal we're discussing, then we'll close the books on 2019. I hope and expect the surplus will be about a million dollars. While I believe all of those things will happen, can't guarantee it, but if and when they do, 600,000 of that million, I would propose going to the fire rig. And then after that, probably after that, it gets a little more complicated where it would go, a lot of different questions there, but that would be my most urgent priority.
Okay.
But of course, it's just my plan. If however, you want to pass a document that funds the fire rig, please keep in mind, you don't have to fund it in future years, the revolving funding will cover it going forward, so you only have to fund it in 2020. It's about 600K is what you gotta find in this budget.
Okay, that, okay, that, no, that, that makes sense. I at least understand where you were, where you're going with those.
And I should be clear, 600K in 2020. Well, let me, let me confirm that later. I don't know that you can necessarily borrow from the future on that project, sometimes we can do that.
Okay. I mean, we can chat about that later, especially if we're just gonna, you know, refer this, which I would prefer. The, one of the things you also mentioned was that you expect to see growth in the terminal tax?
Yes.
What are you basing that on? Because when we got the big jolt a year ago, it was, I thought the messaging was that, you know, expect this to be, you know, this to be the peak, this is gonna plateau and...
No, I don't think anybody believes it will plateau. There will be jolts, this has actually happened before, I've learned quite a bit more, and we're still learning, so I can't, I can't answer every question particularly about how the formula works, but there is a way that when Enbridge does certain work on its infrastructure out of the state of Wisconsin, this, the Wisconsin Department of Revenue then devalues its infrastructure within Wisconsin, most of which is in Superior. That's a very simplistic way of describing it, but in those years where that outside work becomes the lion's share, it, we take a jolt. But on the whole, the value of all of the infrastructure continues to climb, no reason to expect that to fall. Of course, we're projecting future revenue, future value, that's always a guessing game, but it's been pretty stable. We now have some historical context for how this happened. And by the way, I'd say the official position of Superior is that they valued it wrong this year, and we're gonna try and contest that.
Right.
By the way, we were not, we tried in 2011 too, and we're not successful.
Right. And then one last, one last question, more of just a clarification. The, down there on the police take-home squad, we've got that, funding that back down to, it looks like zero in 2020 and zero in 2021, and the police squads and technology are also going down from, from last year. I just, I guess, can, can we go over the, maybe you don't have the numbers, that's fine, but I guess what I, what I want to make sure is that when we front-loaded this take-home squad program, it was, it was to save money in the long run, is we, we front-load these now, the squads get, get more mileage out of them, they get more use out of them, and in the end, it ends up costing us money. What I want to make sure that we're, that we're not doing is celebrating that, that money that we're now saving by not funding them, them properly in the, in the future years.
No, no, that is not what we're doing. The sole reason for the new number for the police squads and equipment was because the average spending in that account was about $222,000.
Okay.
So we're just adjusting it to the average, and of course, eliminating the take-home squad program. That we're just buying squads.
You're eliminating the take-home squad program.
We've eliminated that funding, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Sullivan.
May I ask Chief Gordon a question here?
Yeah, what's the question?
All right, so, can you just clarify that? Is that for $600,000, is that to get the rig up to compliance, or is that for a whole new rig? Can you, can you clarify that then, please?
There, how's that? The, the compliance that the mayor is referring to is NFPA compliance that states that we as a municipality, 15 years is the maximum that a frontline rig can be compliant, can be issued a compliance. So you can't buy back the years, so when it hits 15 years, it hits 15 years, and Engine Two will come out of compliance at the end of this year.
So that would cover for a whole new rig? We need another rig in the year, please.
Correct, but $600,000 probably won't cover the whole thing. The, the hope is to get some other matching efforts with our partners. That was, that was the minimum number that we would have. Unfortunately, the rig that's coming out of compliant this year is our most expensive fire truck, Engine Two, Station Two in North End. It's the only ladder that we have in the city. It's obviously our most visible one because it is the only ladder that we have, which also makes it the most expensive because of the apparatus, i.e. the ladder that's on top of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Bender?
Yes, some people have signed up to speak.
Oh, yes. I figured I'd answer council questions. We, we're not, it's looking like we're not discussing the actual proposal, but while there's not objection, then Mr. Eric Thomas, you signed up to speak.
Eric Thomas?
There we go. Good evening, Eric Thomas. I am the CEO of Saleless Inc. I leased the Barker's Island Marina facility from you, and I'm the general manager. I want to thank you for past CIP funding, and currently, we have a project going on right now. With Linda's help, we're refurbishing up here. What I'd like to speak to is the reduction in proposed funding 2021, '23, '25. So 2020 isn't on the list right now, we have a pot of money we're working through right now. But just a reminder that the, the facility is 40 years old this year, and that our company pays nearly a half million dollars of rent into the general fund this year, next year, every year going forward. So I just encourage you to keep funding as best you can the refurbishment of the facility that is a very big facility out in the weather, aging. And we have, you know, wire, boards, pavement, roofs, all those things are coming due, you know, with 40 years of use. So I just thank you for the funding so far. Please keep it up and have a good evening. Thank you.
Further questions or... Counselor Vansikle.
Thanks, just a quick question. You mentioned a revolving fund for building maintenance, I think, for the fire halls? Can you just point me to that line item here?
Yeah, it's not specifically for...
You mentioned it was largely zeroed out.
Okay, that is the... Okay, it's actually two line items because we had one in 2019, but one will zero out. It says fire rigs, revolving funding.
Is it in essential? Okay, under vehicles and equipment.
Yep, and that should probably be renamed, possibly. The, the reason that has paid for, that should probably say fire rigs and equipment is what we should say going forward. I don't believe it should say fire rigs, equipment, and buildings. I believe buildings should be one fund through the whole city, but that's gonna be an ongoing proposal.
Forgive me if this is a little in the weeds here, but if, and I understand we have new leadership now over there, but what is the mechanism for spending through that if it was spent on other things? I don't understand that.
Generally, it's all in the past, how it's, we've line itemed it for a certain purpose, then it's gone into one fund and was spent on amalgamation of those purposes. So we approved a certain, we approved a certain amount for fire rigs, a certain amount for specific building projects, certain amount for specific equipment purchases, and a number of purchases came out of that, came out of that fund. Some of it, not all of it, was reduced because of some overages in the fire hall. I do not believe that's how we should do that going forward, what we approve should be what is spent. Now, it is in the interests of the city, particularly the department that's overseeing these funds, to have generalized funds, to say this is going to the fire department for their rigs and their equipment. And anything that falls within that description, I trust the fire chief to, to spend. I don't believe it should be a generalized fund with no rules whatsoever, and I really don't agree that money that the council allocated for fire rig should be spent on buildings regardless of how appropriate. I'm not saying that's exactly what happened, but if the fund is all one pot, there's a possibility of that happening.
Okay. And my second, Claire, I just have a question too, because regarding the joke about they didn't fund the cars or whatever that was, the way I understood it at that meeting was that we were, the technology piece was walkie-talkies and that those were not working properly. Did I misunderstand that?
Nope, that was, that was very much brought up as part of the equipment, but the line item in the CIP funds all of the equipment, the vast majority of which goes to squads. So that, that speaks to the same point that you brought up with the fire department. The police chief can use that fund to buy the equipment that he needs. When he's speaking with mayors, and then ultimately the council, he's saying what he plans to buy, but it all, it still comes from all one account. And that was the challenge with the priority setting session. It's clear to me, some of you were voting for walkie-talkies, weren't necessarily voting for a laptop in the squad. So it's, yeah, it was a little bit of a joke, but ultimately, we need to build a squad and equipment fund for the police department so that the police chief can make decisions on what he needs to operate the police department the way he sees fit. I don't think we should get in the weeds on itemized spending like that. Counselor Fennessey.
Just, sorry, just one more. The, if you look at the, under the essential, the park improvements, project timeline to be approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission, 300,000 is allocated for, for this year, but then under discretionary, there's a separate line item, Park Improvements Bear Creek Park for 150,000. What's the, what's the purpose for, for separating these? Because I know last year when we, when we started doing this, it was, everyone was just kinda throwing their, their park in there, and it was all getting a line item, and then we said, all right, let's forget it, let's just put a chunk of money into park improvements, and then let the park commission make their recommendation for an order of importance.
In that specific case, I want to make another point after this, in that specific case, it's because that park is funded by CDBG funding. And so that was approved by the CDBG advisory board and then ultimately the council, so that already has dedicated funding, and you'll see that revenue up top in the revenue section, Community Development Block Grant. So those have their own funding, they've already been approved by council with that dedicated funding. So that's why they're line itemed. However, I recognize, I think many of us agreed that we shouldn't just jump into the CIP for our specific projects, but I also recognize that from time to time, that's going to happen, and the council will just value a project that it wants, that it wants to do. So in that case, at least in this document, because that happened elsewhere in this document, the 28th Street paved path was valued by the council. When I looked at it in the rating criteria, it, it seems like a pretty significant safety improvement. That does help the health and welfare of the community, and it's backed up by the fact that the council also very highly values sidewalks in general. So I wanted to itemize that project, and the way I did it, you'll look, is we reduced the sidewalk funding for that year and put it directly in that named project. So it kinda creates a method for doing that in the future. We should still be very cautious about doing that, and I know where the funding's coming from, but in answer to your specific question, CDBG.
Okay, nope, that's perfect, thanks.
And, and we should note, that will happen in future years as well. So in, in park projects specifically, we're going to have more CDBG park projects, so we're gonna have sidewalk projects as well. Those get approved annually, we are never sure of what the grant is or what the advisory board is gonna say, so we just left it out altogether. We know there will be CDBG projects, particularly in parks, we just don't have them itemized yet.
Okay. Now, the other thing I want to point out is this was a, this was a tough budget, and I want to commend you for the, for the job you did on it.
Thank you. Further questions? For formality's sake, like a motion to approve, and then we will, and then we'll move to table? The motion is by Counsel Bender, is there a second?
Second.
Second is by Counsel Ludwig. And now Counsel Sweeney, you would want to make a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to defer to the next meeting.
The motion is to table until the next meeting by Counsel Sweeney, seconded by Counsel Fennessey. Discussion on the motion to table? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. And counselors, again, I invite you to schedule meetings with me if you'd like to go over this individually. There's a lot of paperwork, and it is, if you don't have them already, please get the big sheets, they are much easier to read. I left a number out there for the public that want, or if you want to grab them on the way out. And to Counsel Sullivan's point, I do have copies of the rating criteria that I looked at.
11.1 is a resolution introduced by the Public Works Department, supporting the inclusion of bike and pedestrian facilities as part of a potential Hammond Avenue reconstruction program.
The motion is by Counsel Bender, the second by Counsel Ludwig, we have somebody here to speak on 11.1, Mr. Peter Grady.
As someone who lived next to a few streets that had these lanes added to them, they do nothing to improve the ability of bikers to use the streets, and they significantly are a detriment to every automobile who tries to drive on those roads. They either severely limit the parking available to residents, or slow down the traffic by narrowing the lanes down, making it much more nerve-wracking if you're trying to bike there. It's not an improvement, it's merely a way to damage cars. I have spoken to the lobbying groups that are pushing this into the Duluth Superior area, and they have explicitly said that it is a method by which they want to... and they have explicitly said that it is a method by which they want to push people out of their cars into alternative methods of transport. It is not something to help the citizens. It is something to hurt the citizens to get them to do what these lobbyists want. Please consider just rejecting this bike path idea and funding the project to improve our streets for the citizens, not these lobbyists. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion. Uh, Counsel Sullivan?
Just for clarification, is there, um, just so we all know, maybe might answer some questions anyone else has, is there reasons that we go with the bike lanes for the, when we do these reconstruction projects? Is there funding? Can you get a, a minus on that one, please?
This, this one, actually, this one and the next one are both, uh, are both discretionary funding through the LRIP program. So, um, we put in an application for a project. Um, so we're hoping, hoping to get some funding outside of what we would normally get. Um, we recently converted Hammond Avenue, um, over to One Direction Each Way with a twiddle and two bike lanes, and so it would continue to be that. And then for 21st to 28th would be the same thing. Um, it's just being recognized as, as a, more of a multimodal, um, multimodal facility with, with a bike lane on it. Um, that doesn't mean it has to be just a painted lane. It could be a, a separated facility. It's just, at, at this point, we're saying that, um, we're going to rebuild Hammond Avenue down the road somewhere. We're hoping for some funding, and it will include a bike facility. And the resolution says the council supports putting that bike facility in there. Um, there is a very small portion that goes towards, you know, we're going to get another little tick mark on our, as far as scoring goes by adding bike facilities, but overall, um, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference.
Counsel Sweeney?
Um, take me through this process where this is a competitive bid we've entered for the, for Hammond Avenue?
It's, it's, uh, it's just an application, um, that goes to the state. The DOT decides, they, they bring together, uh, half a dozen people from municipalities across the state. I don't know how many applications there are, um, for this discretionary funding. The, the pot, if I remember right, is about 18 million. Um, there's another program similar to that where they doubled it this year, that you've heard about, the, uh, M...
MLS.
MLS program. That's 461 applications for $18 million, totaling about $550 million. So the chances aren't real good that we're going to get it, but we at least throw our hat in the ring. So it's, it's extremely competitive.
But enhance our ability to get it, okay? Your term, not mine.
Very, very slightly, I believe.
Oh, okay. Uh, but if we put the bike, uh, trail or lane in there, does it enhance our ability to get the funding?
I, I believe, yes, but it's a very, very small component. So on, on a scale, on a scale of if 100 points, we might get a full point for adding bike facilities based on how I read the application and the, uh, the scoring criteria.
Okay. Hammond Avenue, we have a bike lane there now, right? That, or a painted...
From, from, from Belknap to 21st, yes.
Where are we, where's this funding for? Belknap to?
Belknap to 21st.
Right, that's right, okay. And so currently, there, there's an order, we can ride our, whoever rides their bikes can ride them on the sidewalk. That's still existence.
Correct.
Okay. So we're putting a bike lane there, which it may or may not be more dangerous. I, I don't know the facts about that. But it's known that we can ride the bike, ride all our bikes on the sidewalks. And we're putting another, the bike, and the trail is there. We painted that there existing now, right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay. So we're not widening the road or doing anything to enhance the, the safety of the road? We're just, we're going to resurface it and put the bike lane back where it was?
We don't, we don't know that. It's, it's merely an application that says that we're going to rebuild it. We can, we'll have, we'll have public input, um, including yourself, and what do we want Hammond Avenue to look like when we rebuild it? It could be a separate bike facility. It could be one bike lane on one side, not on the other. We, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm throwing out some pretty, pretty, uh, strange scenarios. Maybe you remove the sidewalk and put a paved path separate from the travel lane.
So the options are...
It's, it's all options, correct.
There are many options.
Right.
So I would think when that time came for the options, if, uh, then public input, everyone else would have a, uh, an opportunity to, to at least vent their idea for the, okay?
Absolutely.
And so I'm still going back to the, it's going to enhance our ability to get this grid very minusculely, if I, okay?
As, as I read it, yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm more concerned about the Moccasins Mike when that comes up. Thank you.
Further discussion? Counsel Olson?
Um, Todd, is this something that Metropolitan Interstate Council and the Bicycle PAC has looked into? For partners?
The, the MIC has already approved, the, 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 the Tech, Technical Advisory Committee approved it as part of the, the improvement plan, and the MIC has already approved it as part of the improvement plan.
So some of the costs of the studies can be absorbed by that organization? Thanks.
Counsel Vancicke?
Um, Todd, on the, in the agenda, it says that, um, this resolution is an application, excuse me, sorry, is an application requirement for the, basically the LRIP grant program. But am I understanding you correctly that it's not, that this resolution is not a requirement for the LRIP grant program? It just enhances our chances?
We didn't want to argue a whole lot with the DOT about it. Um, they, they said that it was a requirement. The way we read it, you got the... This one. What, what, what the application actually says, "If new bicycle and pedestrian facilities are included as part of a reconstruction project, the project recipient is required to have a resolution authorizing the construction of these facilities pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute. A resolution is not required if removing or replacing existing facilities." So that, that is how the, the application, um, directions read. And the DOT contacted us. We put these applications in a couple of months ago and said that we need to have a resolution with them supporting the bike facilities. Now Hammond Avenue, we already painted bike facilities on them, so we'd be enhancing or removing an existing facility, but the DOT is asking us for a resolution supporting them. And since we already have them there, again, it's not, didn't seem like the time to go into great debate with the DOT over, over a resolution.
Okay. Um, what, define bike facility. I mean, is that just a, is that super broad? I mean, it, could it be those, just those bike sheroes that you, you know, that you paint on that?
Absolutely. From, from, from a bike shero to a separate, completely separate facility where you'd have curb and gutter on a, on a separate bike and ped facility, completely separate from the lane of traffic? And then it could go, it's, it's very broad.
Sure, sure. And so the, when, when you look at the CIP, this is scheduled for 2023 and 2024. Are we all, is it, is this normal to work this far ahead of the game for this?
It's, it's almost a little tight.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thanks.
Counsel Vancicke?
Um, just because I, how, what are we estimating? How many millions of dollars to reconstruct Hammond Avenue for cars, peds, for whatever?
Uh, three and a half million?
Three and a half million?
Over two years.
Okay, three and a half million dollars in reconstruction. Um, in having reviewed this CIP extensively, I would find it very difficult to believe this council's in a position to refuse any money from Madison. Um, there are a few roads in this town, Hammond, Moccasin, and East Fifth, that I get more complaints about. Um, and the way I see Hammond Avenue, it will be significantly improved for cars. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Um, 11.2 is a duplicate of 11.1. So 11.3 is a resolution introduced to, by the Public Works Department, supporting the inclusion of bike and pedestrian facilities as part of the potential Moccasin Mike Road reconstruction project.
Motion is by Counsel Vancicke, seconded by Counsel Ludwig. Discussion, Counsel Sweeney?
Here's, uh, it's still not perfectly clear to me, but I think we have options for Moccasins Mike. And so what I'm opposed to in Moccasins Mike there is, I know we're going to cut down some of the hills and we're going to widen the road and such, but, uh, in order to make a, a true bike trail that, that families can use safely, um, I would, we have a trail there now, a walking trail or something there, right?
No.
Partially?
Right. Part, a third?
I'm sorry?
A third, it's, it's a third, a third of the way complete.
Okay, whatever, okay. But to enhance it and make, and I'm, I'm all for biking out to Wisconsin. That'd be a great trip for families and a lot of people. But to ride next to the road on a bike, all the way to Moccasins Mike, uh, I would not choose to do that, okay? I would think it should be, and if the, if this, what we're voting on gives us options, and the state doesn't dictate to us that we must put it right next to the road, then I'm in favor. If the state says, we're going to give you the money, you're either going to put the bike trail with the white down, right next to it, then I'm against that. So my question to you again is, are you assuring me that there's a, a variety of options?
Yes, there's, there's a variety of options. Um, it could be as, as simple and as inexpensive if, if the choice of the council and the public, when we're, when we're doing, um, when we're looking at what this road is going to look like, it can be as much as where we put the, the line painting. We can, if, if we, if we narrow the shoulder a foot and extend the lane width a foot and put a shero in the lane, that would be considered a bike facility. So there's very little expense in doing that that way. But that's, that's the range in where it would start, all the way to having a separate, basically a separate alignment with, with a path for a bike facility. So there, there is a range of options.
Okay. As long as you assure me there's a range of options, because I think this has a great potential to be a bike, a mini bike trail for not only superior families, but for other families. But to ride right next to the, I don't know what the speed limit, I think, I don't know, whatever it is. It's 25 if it's not marked, I think it, maybe it's 35, but that's, 25 would be long, is long gone on that road. So, and it will continue to be gone. So from a safety standpoint, I'm, I'm all for it if it's off-road, okay? And as long as you assure me that's an option, then...
There, there will be a lot more conversations, um, before anything is done on that, on that road and what that's going to look like.
All right. Um, I'm, I'm not trying to wordsmith you, but conversation, there can be a lot of conversation about a lot of things, not...
Right, right, exactly.
Okay.
And, and if we get awarded a grant...
If that's an option, if, those are options, then I'm, I'm in favor of it.
And if we were to get awarded a grant or, or qualify for the grant, I would bring that to you, and these would be the options, and, um, you'd say, yes, we, yes, we definitely want to move forward with it.
I think Jenny would be on that too, and she probably is. And maybe I'm, I'm interjecting something that's been all thought and talked through and vetted. I don't know, but I didn't know about, I am concerned about the, I think that we have a great opportunity to make a great bike, mini bike trail out there.
Absolutely.
Want to clarify, we spent a lot of time tonight talking about the, the future of these projects. There are a few, uh, operations in the city as well-vetted as our transportation projects. As Counsel Olson points out, the MIC puts considerable work in these, sometimes at multiple levels. When it comes to, uh, bike and, uh, ped transportation, that has an independent subcommittee that, that vets and develops plans for bike and ped infrastructure across the Twin Ports and then sends it to the full Metropolitan Interstate Council, where City Superior is well-represented, and they also vet it. I, I'd encourage the entire council to visit the Metropolitan Interstate Council. Attend one of those meetings. You'll find it one of the most interesting and engaging meetings you attend. I'm, I'm surprised that's not a more competitive committee each year. A little bit biased, I sat on that for years. Uh, we have a motion, a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
12.1 is a resolution, an ordinance introduced by the Public Works Department, amending the traffic code, disabled do not block sidewalk by adding 1213 coming.
Motion is by Counsel Elms, seconded by Counsel Vancicke. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
12.2 is an ordinance introduced by the Chief Building Inspector, Inspector, amending Section 104-135, prohibited occupancy under the Property Maintenance Code.
Motion is by Counsel Bender, seconded by Counsel Elms. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify. Do you have, uh, seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
12.3 is an ordinance introduced by the Chief Building Inspector, amending Section 1-14 citations and deposit for violation of certain provisions.
The motion is by Counsel Vancicke, the second by Counsel Ludwig. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. We have no further business and are adjourned. Thank you, counselors.